Hey Matt.
Hello.
Get your first six wines.
Hello again. Hey Ned, hey Chris, how are you?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Pretty good, thanks.
Doing good too, thank you.
Hi Elizabeth, nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you.
Yeah.
I think we're all here for now. I think Peter is joining us a little bit later again, right? And Betsy will be joining when she can. So Matt, are we ready to start? Carol?
I'm ready.
Okay. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on a published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046, as Quentia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the Municipal Clerk Princeton Packard in the Times on January 6, 2021. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 3088.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to a high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. I'll take the roll call if you wish.
Thank you.
Beth Baron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Betsy Baglio? Ryan McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz? Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Susan Kanter?
Here.
Jean Durbin?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. That takes us to our first order of business, which is the adoption of minutes from November 9, 2021. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Jean? If there's no discussion, could we have a vote on the minutes, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us to our student board members' report. Ned and Chris, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's really great to be here. Life has been going smoothly at PHS for the last few weeks. We've been talking to students and the overwhelming consensus has been that these past few weeks have felt like a blur, which is definitely a telltale sign that things are going back to normal here. Additionally, on October 29th, Student Council also hosted our Halloween Dance, which has been our first in several years. We had a great turnout and everyone who came seemed to love it. In addition, we also had a wildly successful Hispanic Heritage Month Assembly, which had the entire school, and featured dancing, poetry, singing, and our very own studio band. So we'd like to thank Mr. Schmeele, as well as all the admin here at PHS, for putting that together, in addition to all the teachers who were involved. Lastly, with Thanksgiving break coming up next week, a lot of our students, staff, and faculty are very excited and looking forward to that. That being said, although school is going back to normal, the pandemic is still not. And we again want to talk about the importance of COVID-19 procedures here in school at PHS. A lot of simple protocols like mask-wearing when around others and social distancing are still completely ignored during break or in hallways. And also during class, our teachers are the ones who have to enforce these guidelines. And we're eternally grateful for them, but it's getting easy to the point where every class teachers have to repeatedly remind all these students to wear their mask. So there needs to be a better system in place to make sure that we're keeping all of our students and all of our staff and all of our teachers safe. And we strongly urge the Board and administration to examine this issue closely.
This year, in my experience, students have really taken a new level of ownership over our schools. And students seem to be really excited about making the schools as good as they can be. And a recent suggestion that I've heard has to do with the way our health and gym curriculums work. Currently, the district has a single position encompassing both the roles of supervisor of physical education slash health and director of athletics. And our current supervisor does quite a good job managing our athletic programs and overseeing the district-wide PE classes. But in other districts, this is actually often, while we have one person doing the job, in other districts, this is usually split between two people, one as the director of athletics and one supervising PE and health curriculum. And I wanted to ask the Board and superintendent to consider the possibility of having these as two separate positions. Having having two separate positions would allow our our health classes and gym classes curriculums, which students right now feel are slightly outdated and lacking and provide students with very little guidance and kind of discount the health program. But having a designated supervisor of physical education and health would allow the schools to devote resources to revamping these curriculums to better reflect our values of diversity and to better assist our students in building healthy habits. Overall, we think this will be a relatively plausible way directly improve the quality of our district's education. And it's something that we've heard a lot of our peers discussing, and I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Ned. Thank you, Chris. Did any board members have any questions? Michelle? You're muted. Michelle?
All right, sorry about that. That was a great report. Thank you. Chris, my question for you is, do you have any suggestions as to how we can increase enforcement in the wearing of masks and COVID protocols? You know, because I'm thinking, do we need to talk more to parents? Do, is there a peer, a way that maybe there is some, I don't want to call it peer pressure, but a certain culture that can be promoted in the schools to encourage kids to comply? I was having a conversation with someone the other day who was talking about how they were, they had a lottery in states to get people to get COVID shots, like they're paying people in certain places. But I don't know how effective that is. But I'd love to hear if you guys, you too Ned, have any ideas about how we can be helpful in encouraging students to to wear their mask properly and social distance.
Yeah, for sure. I think that it really depends on friend groups. Some groups of students will adamantly wear their mask. They'll always social distance. Others won't. So I've seen that Mr. Schmeele recently sent out a new system where but outside of just teachers encouraging students to wear their mask, they're also going to include possible disciplinary action. And I just saw that as like a really small paragraph in one email. So maybe making that more publicized and making sure that all students are aware of that. Because outside of that email, I really haven't heard anything about that. And I don't know if that's really going into effect. So just making sure that students know the consequences, not just disciplinary, but also making sure that they know why mask-wearing is important. Because a lot of students view mask-wearing or even getting a COVID-19 shot as unimportant. So I think really educating students and making sure that they're aware of these consequences is really critical.
Okay.
A positive reinforcement, like a coupon for doing the right thing for a slice of pizza or something? I don't know. I'm kind of on the positive. I think that is more effective. But well, certainly not to criticize anything Mr. Schmeele and anybody at the high school is trying to do because it's super important. But thanks for bringing that to our attention.
All right, thank you. How about Debbie? Did you have something?
It was exactly what Michelle said. What can we do to improve it? Thank you, guys.
Thank you both for your reports and for your constructive suggestions. It's always welcome. Is there anything else? Then I think we'll go on. For the president's report tonight, I don't have, I don't have much to say, other than I want to just kind of give a shout out and a reminder to people that we're coming to the time of year where we're having some really wonderful opportunity to see the work and creativity of our students and our staff in the fine arts and all other ways too. But immediately this weekend, we're aware that there is a, I think, a livestream theater performance at PHS on Friday and Saturday nights. And we encourage people to look for that and watch and support our students. I think there's a lot of, if I understood correctly, there's maybe 150 students participating somehow, which is really kind of interesting and exciting. And I know that there's a middle school play coming up and there's a lot of concerts. And I'm sure there's details about those are going to continue to come up on the district website and in social media. And I'm sure that PHS play information is on the school website. So I encourage people to watch for that. And I'd also want to just let people know there will be a bagels with the Board this week at Johnson Park Elementary School on Friday at 8:00 AM to 9:30. And we welcome parents to come and come chat with us and let us know how it's going and get to know the Board a little bit. We like to go out and see the schools and meet with parents and and just show some support for our staff and our students and just to be out in the district. So that's a, and we thank Debbie Bronfeld for kind of pushing that with us. She's got us to do it this year at all of our schools. And we'll just keep, you know, we continue to do that. And any other ideas from the community as to how we can, we can be out there and hear from you is welcome. So I didn't have anything else in my report. Mr. Bolden, did you have a gratitude today?
I wanted to thank, I've been thinking about this a lot. I wanted to thank our school leaders, principals, and associate principals specifically for helping to get this year started off well. You know, I think it's been a challenging year for everyone involved and they've done a great job. And I've learned a lot about our leaders and some of them new. We have a lot of new leadership and they're doing a great job. And that's who I wanted to thank.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate that. So we all support that gratitude today. We have this as a regular part of our agenda. Thanks to Jess Deutsch, a pass board member, who really kind of pushed us to do this and have it as a regular basis. So we take turns kind of coming up with ways we can show gratitude in all of our meetings because we believe that's really an important part of leading this district. We have a lot of people doing a lot of great work and putting their all into it every day for the kids. So that takes us to Dr. Kelly. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. How are you? All right, I'm going to give a very brief presentation. Let me start the slideshow now. All right, for this evening, the superintendent's report is very brief. First, I want to thank the Princeton Health Department for partnering with the district and hosting COVID-19 shot clinic on November 30. As you know, everyone now age five and older can get their COVID-19 vaccine. School districts across the state have been asked by the Department of Health to make sure that we communicate this information to our families and where we can to partner with our local health departments and providing clinics. We also know that many of our local pediatricians, Princeton Nassau, is also hosting opportunities for students to get vaccinated. So I love this picture, that we can do this. And I'm very excited that perhaps we can, together as a community, get to the other side of this pandemic one day. I would like to remind everyone of the procedures that we do have in place for holiday travel. Much like our student board members stated, we really do need the entire community to help us with the procedures. If your son or daughter is unvaccinated and you do travel outside of the New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Connecticut area, we are asking you, please, especially if you plan to travel for longer than 24 hours, that when you get back, that you please quarantine for a minimum of seven days with testing and 10 days without a test. This really will help us, you know, to maintain the number of students who may present themselves as a positive COVID case. And it will prevent us from having to have many students out of school for having to quarantine. Just as a reminder, for students who receive a negative test after days three through five, can return to school post-travel. So that would be day number seven. And again, for crisis go, when we are on Thanksgiving break, you do not need to submit your crisis go on those days. I will be hosting a book club. And the first book that I'm introducing to read along with the community and the staff is called Dare to Leave by Bernie Brown. So please pick up your book from your local favorite store, bookstore, or our Princeton Public Library. And you can follow me on Twitter for further information regarding our reading plan. Finally, next on the agenda, we just placed for the Board's review, our draft SY23. And I believe the draft SY24 district calendar proposals are there. Just for the Board and the community's information, I did pull together an ad hoc committee to look at making a recommendation to the Board for our calendars. So we met in October. Following that meeting, and it was a cross-role group of union leaders, as well as district administrators and other staff, looked at the calendars. We listened to some of the concerns that we received from the Board. And we looked at various options. Those three options were reviewed by my cabinet team. And we narrowed those three options down to two. And we presented the draft to the SAC Committee. I don't think we did to Ops Tactical, so that's my apologies. As well as I presented the draft options to the staff through a thought exchange. And based on the input from the ad hoc committee cabinet, as well as the thought exchange, I am recommending this draft to the Board for approval at the December Board meeting. We are allowing this time between this Board meeting and December so that the members of the public can review the drafts that are on tonight's agenda and to send us any questions, thoughts, perspectives that you have so that the Board can make an informed decision in December. So that concludes my report. I would like to wish our families and our staff a very restful and wonderful Thanksgiving break. I hope that everyone, please, reads and follows the CDC recommendations so that we're all safe and can return to school appropriately following our break. I'm going to turn the floor back over to our Board President. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Are there questions? Daphna, I see you have a question. I think you're muted, Matt Daphna.
Yep. We should all get shirts. Am I muted? Dr. Kelly, thank you for that. I just had a question for Connecticut. Do we need, if families travel to Connecticut over Thanksgiving, do they need to quarantine?
Dr. Kelly, you're muted.
I'm muted too. They do need to quarantine. They were added, I believe, recently. So they will still need to quarantine after travel. And this really just pertains to our unvaccinated students.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yes, Dr. Kelly, thanks for the presentation of the calendar. And I appreciate all of the groups that provided input. I'm just curious. We've heard for several years about a desire to start a week earlier. We know that the university has changed its calendar and many families have let us know that they would appreciate starting a week earlier and finishing a week earlier. And I'm just curious how that was, how you thought about that in the discussions.
Yep, I'll share some of the thoughts that were exchanged from the staff. Some of the key thoughts were around that, that week with starting earlier, you would have a longer week. So many of, many of the staff, you could see here in terms of like, this was one of the top ranked thought that was exchanged, felt that the shorter week would be an easier transition for, for students to come back in after the summer. There was also some thoughts exchanged around, and this was not a top thought, but I did see some thoughts exchanged around those staff members who work in our summer programming or that work, you know, over the summer, that it really allows those staff members to squeeze in like that final family vacation. I'm, you know, I'm just sharing with you another top rate ranked thought, not necessarily something that I agree or disagree with. But the, the thought around spreading the school year all over the calendar, it, you know, this thought was like, life is stressful, that the change was felt by several other staff as shrinking the family time away from the demands of school. So I think there was, at least from the staff, a great deal of the participation I want to show here, at least for right now, with the amount of conversations that we've had about shifting the calendar, there's about a 70/30 split with starting the school year prior to Labor Day. We traditionally try to do three professional days for staff before students return. So the, the option to shift the, the end of the school year would require our having staff do those three professional learning days. I think one of the options was August 29th, 30th, and 31st, or I forget, but it was, they would start before Labor Day and then students would start like that Tuesday. There's, there's still potentially, I know several board members have asked questions regarding our having the polling places and other places outside of schools. You'll see on option one, that's on the calendar, that we do have two professional learning days where schools are closed. I believe one date is November 8th. And then the second one, I believe, is June 6th. So right now, we are closing the schools from the standpoint of safety. So there, there might be some, some wiggle room. And the other thing that the committee considered was the third Friday of June now is a holiday that schools have to be closed for Juneteenth. So the option one for SY23 does wrap around to that last, that third full week of June for the end of school, unless we could find the two days. But if we, you know, we have snow days built in as well. So really even changing your polling locations where you could use those two days in November and June with still, with a snow day, you might still go into that third week of June.
Thank you.
I have a question too, Dr. Kelly. We, in past years, when we have a calendar, one of the things we, somehow data we got back from around the challenge success, I think it was, was the idea of looking at student, effective student learning days. And we had some, I guess, some feedback that the summer, the longer we went into summer, the less effective it was for the students, that they weren't, weren't, it was getting more difficult for them to focus and it was more difficult for them to to cover material. And so there was some discussion about moving the days earlier, you know, shifting the calendar forward for that reason. And there's also the issues of, I guess, childcare, that people have trouble at the last week of the summer finding childcare. And it would be easier for some parents. So I assume those things are all kind of part of the mix and what you're weighing on, how you land on these things.
Yep, we took those considerations into the ad hoc committee meeting. I think like further conversations that we have with staff. Also, the, the agreement that the Board has with our largest group would be PREA. I think that there are things outside of the proposal of the calendar. So right now, I always like to propose a draft calendar for two years. But there, there still would be time to look at the SY24 with some of the conversations that the Board perhaps could have with the associations on some of the provisions, whether it's, you know, looking at a variety of things. I think the other thing that the Board could do in terms of support would be at the legislative, you know, level, trying to advocate for schools having more autonomy in terms of the types of days. You know, I'm all for like a good old fashioned like snow day. But there are other opportunities. I think that it would be great if schools would be able, school districts are able to call for a virtual learning day. And, you know, I, I think that there are things that are outside of our, our influence that could also impact and support a school calendar to get to many of those outcomes.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate having a two-year look. We've been asking for that for, for a long time. And it does, does give us more of a runway. And if there are matters that we can maybe talk about in our advocacy and policy group, you know, we can work on that. Jean, I see you had a question?
Yeah, thanks so much. Thanks, Dr. Kelly. As Beth said, it's a great overview for two years. I have a question, since this is my first go-around about process. And, you know, how, how it works and is, does the, does the Board drive this? Or does our staff? And do you drive this? And I wondered if also if we had parents and students as stakeholders when we were gathering information.
So the process, I would say, the Board like approves the calendar. So they ultimately like have, you know, the final say. The recommendation The recommendation typically is crafted by an administrative team. You know, we did use a cross role team. So our team consisted of the union, either the leaders themselves or they sent a representative. So we have representatives from PAA, PREA, and also PRESA. I had someone from HR, the curriculum, you know, because they're responsible for the PD, and the superintendent's office, and I believe communications. I brought to the ad hoc committee the, what I had heard from the board in terms of like, you know, our, the desire to try to start the school year earlier so that we could end earlier. And they did look at a variety of various options. One of the options was cutting spring break instead of a full five days cutting that back. One of the options was starting those PD days prior to Labor Day. And then this is the op, the third, the third option that we tossed around was that, that traditional option. We have certain number of professional learning days that are driven by one of the contracts. We also have certain number of instructional days that are driven by, you know, the state of New Jersey DOE. So those are all the various factors. So like what you could like wiggle with would be, obviously, the start and the end of the school year. You could also like do some wickle room with your spring break. You could, you could have like wickle room with various options. But in, I would say typically, the ad hoc committee makes the recommendation to the board. You, you know, the reason why I wanted to do the thought exchange with staff was to touch base and get a pulse check on what their thoughts were about starting prior to the start of Labor Day. Because in New Jersey, it's, in certain areas of New Jersey, it's, it might require a lot of conversation to get that buy-in support. So I just really wanted to see like where the, the staff was on that.
Okay, any other questions on the superintendent report? If there are none, I believe that takes us to, I guess, Mr. Bolden, we have the referendum communications update.
Yeah, I'm going to pass, pass that along to Elizabeth Collier, our public information officer. She's going to give a brief, and I'm going to share her presentation. It's just a one pager, Elizabeth. That's not it. That's it.
Perfect. Thank, thank you. I, I just wanted to say that the district's role regarding the referendum is not to endorse or support it, but simply to ensure that our community has the facts about the issue. So we've created a webpage where information will be available. And we've already started to reach out to the PTOs at all six schools. In fact, today, Matt gave a presentation at the Littlebrook PTO meeting. And we've scheduled dates for all of the other PTOs. And in addition, we're organizing Zoom meetings and other public events so that we can share factual information. We're creating interactive opportunities for the community to ask questions. And finally, during the months of December and January, we'll use the district communication platforms, including social media, to ensure that information regarding the referendum is available. And also in January, we will coordinate with a variety of groups to help get the word out about the January 25th vote. So I think that's about it for now.
Thank you so much for that, Elizabeth.
Dan, do you have a question?
I do. The, you know, we typically have Election Day off from school. In the proposed referend- referendum date, will that be a school day? Or will we, when people are voting, or will, or will kids have the day off?
It will be a, a school day because we are not able to do a, a virtual day for it to count as an instructional day. However, we can do our early dismissal for our schools so that it will still count as a full instructional day. But from the standpoint of safety, we could make sure that as people come in to vote, that our students will have been dismissed. So I, I would, I would suggest that following this vote at the next meeting, that we take act or recommend action where we make that, that January 25th an early dismissal day for a couple of reasons. One, we were closed for the November Election Day. But the governor did say that individuals did not necessarily have to wear their mask in schools when they came to vote. So we, from, from that safety perspective, we would not have to have staff in the building while individuals come to vote. And also, I think, I think a lot of school districts since the unfortunate events happened several years ago have taken measures that if their schools are still used as polling locations, they typically don't try to have students in the, in the buildings at the same time anymore. So I know that that probably had been a practice. But I, I think from a safety standpoint, and we, we could still have and make sure that we have, if we did decide to keep students there, you know, for the full day, we could make sure that we have security and things of that nature. But I, I would recommend that we do an early dismissal on the 25th.
And just to follow up on that, does that imply that, for example, if they get out at one, that the voting would be open from one to seven, let's say? You know, from normal hours, seven to seven, I think is.
I think it would be, Matt was projecting 1:30 to eight o'clock.
1:30 to eight would be that. So the kids were out, so we, safety is, you know, the most important thing clearly.
Okay, so voting would be 1:30, 1:00 to eight, okay.
1:30.
1:30 to eight.
So I just wanted, Elizabeth, thank you so much for that. Great presentation. Appreciate it. And just, Matt, further to Dr. Kelly's point about early dismissal, just so, do we know yet where the polling locations are? We, we're pretty confident it will be, it's going to be consolidated. Is that right?
We haven't decided if it'll be consolidated or not. You know, typically, it's the four elementary schools.
No, no, related to the regular voting, where I think we have 22 precincts. So with the referendum voting, I think we have less. Is that correct?
We have, we typically have less voter.
Again, the point I was trying to make is it would only, I think it would only be an early dismissal for the elementary schools. Is that right?
Yeah, last, the last time we did, sorry, a referendum vote, it was only in the elementary schools.
Yes, we, yeah, those, those are the only schools we host voting in. And, and I think we would probably have the four schools, the voting, just to keep, so people don't get confused. However, if you remember last year, if we do a bifurcated dismissal with our difficulty of staffing crossing guards, because we have a lot of walking students, that leads to a problem. So I think we're looking to, unfortunately, I'm not a big fan of early dismissals. But, you know, I think in this case, it's the best situation. It would be district-wide, I think, would be the recommendation.
So do you know when it'll be final where people, so people know where to go vote? Or is?
Well, we have to notify the county board of elections by a week from today, eight, a week from tomorrow, 24th. So very, very shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, we, I just want for the public's, you know, for who is watching this meeting, we, we, we did dedicate our last, our previous meeting to, to, a week ago, we had a quite detailed presentation on the referendum. Mr. Bolden, I don't think we're, are we having any slides on it tonight before we vote? Or are we, is there any more information tonight? No. So just in case there are, is anyone watching here who, who wants to understand, you know, the board has spent a great deal of time talking about what is in the referendum and, and the various attributes of it. So, so I just want to understand, because we have it on the, we have it as an action item on our agenda tonight at the end, after the last public comment. I just want to make sure if the board has any discussion or, because we want to make sure we have the opportunity for a public comment after, before we vote, but after we've talked about it. Does that make sense? So if anyone wants to speak about it or, or talk, right? We should make sure we're bringing that up now before we have public comment.
Well, we'll have an opportunity to talk about it as an action item, right? When it comes up.
We can talk about it then, yes, yes. Okay. Great. So we are now then moving on to our first public comment. And I'm just pulling this up. And we have, we want to just remind the public that written comments can be submitted to us. There's an email posted on the agenda. It's ppsboe@princetonk12.org if you're not comfortable speaking and you would like to send us something. And that email reaches all board members as a group, as well as the superintendent, the business administrator, and the director of communications. The board values the opinions and input of students, staff, parents, and community members on any topic. And when called upon to speak, please provide your name and home address, and keep your comments to three minutes to be respectful of those who wish to comment after you. Please direct your comments to the board, but note that this is not a discussion or a Q and A. Under New Jersey law, the board shall not discuss personnel matters and shall not respond to comments made by the public. So the board president may refer questions or requests for action to staff for response at a later date. Speakers are reminded that comments should be respectful and maintain a level of decorum appropriate for a meeting of a public body. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. There will be a 15-minute maximum time period for comments, inclusive of all speakers, unless otherwise agreed by the board. So thank you for your consideration, and we welcome comments.
So are there any public members that want to make a comment? I don't see any at this moment. Beth, I don't see anyone with their hand.
Okay, well, then we'll just keep going. There'll be one more comment section later. That takes us to item I1, harassment, intimidation, bullying. That's a consent item. And then that takes us to J1 Board Committee Highlights. And we start with equity.
Okay, hi, sorry, sorry, sorry. Too many screens, too many screens. All right, um, so thank you. The Equity Committee met in open session on Monday, November 8th at 7:00 PM in order to plan for the closed session meeting with PHS students. We're planning for this meeting to take place in December. And Betsy and I, as co-chairs, will meet with the National Equity Project staff and student leaders to plan ahead for the meeting. The board members will be present, and we will be note takers and observers. The December Equity Committee meeting will be held in closed session. Our intent is to provide the supporting conditions for students to share in a space where they can be open and honest so the board can better understand their post-pandemic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If none, that we go to the Operations Committee.
Hi, we met on November 10th at 8:00 AM. First, I would like to express some gratitude, since Matt did the gratitude before. But I think our committee is definitely thankful for the efforts of Matt, Dave, and his team. We had a very long and varied agenda, and we know how much work went into putting that together. So thank you. We received an update on, we received an update on, on the ongoing referendum projects as well as discussions on the referendum that will be considered tonight on the agenda. There are also projects being undertaken that are not part of the reference that we worked on, like building controls, the pool, auditorium repairs. And we received updates on those as well. In terms of sustainability, we have learned that they're going to begin a process with Sustainable Princeton to set up some goals for our district and are going to be looking in the future towards items like electric buses and obviously solar. We also received an update in terms of COVID on the HEPA filters that were purchased for our schools. And we will, the board has posted where those locations are in each of the schools to preserve our health. And Matt also mentioned that we would begin, he would start beginning his budget planning with ways to make it more detailed and have more explanations for both the board and the public. And continued, his continued work in terms of long-term planning and how that, how he was going to move forward on that. Our next meeting will be on December 8th at 8:00 AM, and it is open to the public.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions? If there are none, then we go on to Personnel, please. Michelle?
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on November 4th. I don't have anything that I can report from that meeting. Our next meeting is on December 3rd. And I do want to also acknowledge for the second time that this is probably the last time that Mike will be with us all together. And I want to wish him well in his new job. And good luck, and thanks for everything you've done for the district. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Thanks to the rest of the board, too. I learned a lot, and I'll take that all with me. Thank you.
Good luck, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Good luck.
Then we go to Policy.
Policy will meet this Friday, the 19th, at 7:30. The agenda is the legalization of cannabis and one other things.
Thank you, Jean. Student Achievement, Daphna?
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee met Friday, last Friday, the 13th, 12th, the 12th. And we had a very packed meeting and went for three hours. The first thing that the committee discussed was we received an update on, on the district's progress on addressing recommendations from the Special Education Report. Some of the things that are going to be worked on are smart IEPs. And it will be a goal across departments. They'll be training on IEP goals and reset expectations higher. And one of the goals is by June 2022, that the entire special ed team is better trained on goals, and there is better defined goals for kids in their IEPs. They're looking to develop co-teaching pairs. And there's some ESSR money, which is, is, it's, it's COVID-8, but it's called Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. Some of that money will be used to develop professional development over the summer for our special education and other teachers. We then discussed a plan review of our DLI program. On the agenda for tonight is, for board approval, is the appointment of the Center for Applied Linguistics to provide an evaluation of the Elementary and Middle School Dual Language Immersion Program. We expect, this will be, the, the consultant will collect information and data to respond to research questions posed by the district, analyze data, and develop a written report to be presented to the district's Board of Education. We expect this review to be completed by the end of April, May. And so we look forward to getting some feedback on our dual language program, which is in its seventh year. We also discussed, Vali Oerich came to the committee and discussed in more detail the item on for the board to accept the grant application for the ESR funds, which I mentioned previously is around $2.2 million. We also, on the board agenda for tonight, we discussed some preschool expansion that will take place. The district will be receiving a grant from the state. And the district's plan is a targeted preschool program for at-risk children as defined by law. We then discussed a music field trip. Kudos to Pat Lenahan. He is trying to see if that's something that could happen towards the end of the, of the school year. Everything is tentative right now. It, it, nothing's certain, and it will all be determined by the coronavirus and how that's doing. But it's nice to talk about things that we talked about before the pandemic. Then Student Achievement went into closed session to talk about some other things. Our next meeting is December 10th at 9:30. Thanks. And the public's welcome to attend.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question? Are we expanding the preschool program? Are we adding a classroom? That's what we talked about. That's what we talked about. Okay. That's great, great news.
And really, it's a great, I mean, it's, it just shows how good the program is. Valerie O'Rick, you know, has really been spearheading it and she's done a fantastic job.
Where would that classroom be located at the Y?
I didn't think we were expanding one next year. Is that is in, am I wrong there?
Twenty two to twenty seven, so it would be next year.
The following.
Twenty twenty two.
Look, I look forward to hearing more about that. I just, I just picked my ears perked at that.
We did expand in twenty twenty fiscal twenty two is this year we did expand, but I, unless I'm wrong, I could be wrong. Unless Bowery, she told me that we weren't expanding.
Wait, hold on, Bob's gonna chime in. I see it.
I believe we're, we're looking if we have the right space to expand it in September.
That's great news, Bob, thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that. Okay, that takes us to, I think we're going to go into our consent agenda items on K. And I will go through them rather quickly. If anyone has anything to comment on, just stop me. But they'll all be covered by the consent agenda. So first we hit K one appointments, K two resignations, K three leaves of absence, K four personnel items, K five reappointments, K six student services, K seven curriculum instruction, L one preschool expansion, L two grant application, L three educational consulting, M one educational placement, M two home instruction, N one financial reports.
Hold on, hold on. Is that an action item?
It is.
Okay.
Oh, yes, okay. So financial reports is an action item. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Susan, any discussion? If none, could we have a vote?
Just a question. Why did financial reports suddenly become an action item?
I think one of our members has a conflict and we had to separate it out. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, which makes sense. So could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Beth Barrett?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Stain.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passed. That now we're on to N two.
Beth, I just spoke to Valerie to find out the true information. So we were planning to expand the pre K in September, but we couldn't identify any space for the September. So Matt was correct, we're not going to expand it until September of twenty three. We've, the Y is doing renovations now and they've promised us three classrooms for September of twenty three.
That's exciting. Thank you. Thank you for that, Bob. So N two, fire and evacuation drills. And three, travel registration. And four, change order. And five, amendment of grant application. And six, comprehensive maintenance plan. And then we go to O one, the consent. Can I have a motion, please? Michelle, the second, Peter. Any discussion? We have a vote, please.
Beth Barrett?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Consent, consent agenda passes.
Consent agenda is passed. We are on to P one again, second public comment and the same comments, the introduction I just read before. We're going very quick tonight, but again, three minutes. Identify yourself, please. If there's anyone here. None?
Hold on. That is correct.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the Q one, twenty twenty two referendum resolution. And shall I, shall I read it? The resolution providing for special bond, school district election to be held on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two for consideration of a bond proposal by the legally qualified voters of the school district. And the text is in the agenda, the full text. Mr. Bolden, do I need to read the whole thing or are we, what would be appropriate?
No, I actually checked with bond counsel. Yeah, she said no.
Okay, so we've all read, read the proposal. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second, Daphna. Do we have any discussion?
Well, before we vote, and I would open up to anyone to go ahead of me, I just wanted to explain why I intend to vote no. And, you know, have voted to advance the referendum beginning in July. But our current referendum of twenty eight million, you know, has been an incredible challenge despite the hard work and diligence of our administrators like Matt and Dave Harding and the leadership of Susan and Brian on the board, our volunteer board members, and has become delayed and 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 is over budget. Again, not through the fault of anyone on this Zoom. And I do think under the expression haste makes waste. You know, I think it's important in these referendum projects are incredibly complex and time consuming. And so I'd love to see this one completely finished before we move on to a new one. We've had issues with our construction managers. We've had to change our construction manager. And we've had issues with our architect that we've discussed in and in closed session. And typically even after construction is finished, you know, you have issues that 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 continue and you deal with for months and sometimes years later. And so, you know, I think the prudent thing to do would be to delay this. And I would love to see it delayed till November eighth of twenty two, which would be the general election date. And that brings me to the, you know, the second issue is is it does cost, as Matt said, twenty three thousand to hold a special election. But it's not just the cost of the special election. You know, many of our our community members, our voters feel disenfranchised when they don't, you know, when they're unable to vote. Some of our senior citizens get rights to the polls. And it's a burden for people to come out and vote in a special election as important it is because the schools are ultimately responsible for forty nine percent of our property taxes. And so many people have talked to me about, you know, why can't we hold it on on election day? And of course, there are complications that we discussed a few minutes ago about the complexities of holding an election. And and voting won't be open in the morning for those people who are now commuting back into New York. They may not get back in time for an eight o'clock window at night. So we have to compress the voting from one thirty to eight. So a lot of our community members feel disenfranchised by when they see a special election, which they in January with their no cost money. And they may even not be able to participate in. And we know from prior experience that the turnout is is low compared to the general election date, in which case, and which is scheduled, which is November eighth of two thousand and twenty two. So I think a lot of good work has gone into it. I think that, you know, the last issue was around warranties and something that Debbie Bronfeld has brought up every meeting. And again, because of the all the hard work and and the existing referendum, all the responsibility our great staff has with their day to day jobs. You know, things like warranties, you know, don't get the priority that they might otherwise. And I think we owe it to our community to the extent that our roots do have warranties to pursue that as, you know, as because it is, it is important. So it is with regret that I'm going to have to vote no, but I think that a lot of good work went into it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Would anyone else like to comment? Michelle.
To Dan's point, there's no voting by mail in this January election?
No, the people will, who are registered vote by mail will receive ballots. In fact, they go out on December or on or around December eleventh. Forty five days, forty five days ahead of scheduled.
Okay.
Vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jean?
Thanks. Do we still have time to work on other locations for the polling place, like perhaps the municipal building? And do we know if people can vote anywhere in Princeton, not just in a particular polling place? So for example, if we have the municipal building site open from six A M. till eight P M. You know, and you can vote anywhere in Princeton. Do we have that sort of information yet? Is that something we could find out to make it more accessible? In addition to the vote by mail option that Michelle mentioned?
So we have a pretty tight window, about eight days before we have to really not the timeframe now to make a change, though I do think I've heard since I've started here at least a lot in the last twelve to fourteen months about moving, voting out of the schools. And I think a lot of our neighboring communities have done this. And I think that we do have time now to notify the township, if that would be the will of the board, that, you know, starting next November, that we would like to have elections and give them time to find the proper polling places outside of our schools.
I just had a quick question. Dan, you mentioned one thirty to eight. Have those hours? I I apologize, I had to join the meeting late. Have those been finalized?
So we have not finalized that, but we do have to finalize that within the next week. And the resolution bond council, we specifically left that out because it wasn't completely finalized. So we wanted to give a little discretion. There's language inside of the further along in the resolution that gives us that discretion. But the county does have to know within the next few days by the twenty fourth of the latest.
Let's see, you're on mute. Let's see, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, sorry. It was my recollection from the last referendum that we did not have the ability to schedule voting afternoon only. So I I believe it had to be the entire day, but anyway, I'm sure people are looking into that, but I just wanted to.
It was two to nine. Betsy, I didn't mean to cut you off if you had, you were, it was two to nine last year and it was held in the schools. And it was regular dismissal. The last referendum.
So the question, Betsy, that came up was whether we would close the schools. And in the recommendation which will come will be to have an early dismissal at one, which means voting would start at one thirty. But, you know, a lot of people who commute into New York, for example, you know, can only vote in the morning and 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 will, you know, some, many get home very late and won't be able to vote then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other comments on the referendum before we vote? I just wanted to, to again, thank our administration for their work in putting this all together. You know, since we brought Dave on board and and with Matt's wonderful and expert kind of collaboration with Dave, asked to look at all of our buildings and to bring us into, bring us up to code and up to to the the condition that we we think is appropriate for teaching and learning in our buildings. And one of the things that they've done is just taken a survey of the entire. And we talked about this last week, but I just want to emphasize again, you know, they, they looked at all of our facilities. They said, how can we be be good stewards? What do we need to do? And they've come up with this proposal for the roofs and we are now going to be fixing the roofs in all of our schools. And I can't say, I couldn't be happier. I wish we could talk about students all the time, but, you know, we need rooms for our students to learn in. And I can't get out of my mind the picture of the buckets and the mobile trashcans at the the high school that they roll out every time it rains. And, you know, gee, it would be great if we could wait on and and do these things more separately. And it's going to be a challenge, we know that. Although we should be finished with the twenty eighteen projects, I think this, by the spring. But we know that we won't, we we may have a shot of actually fixing the Littlebrook roof, I think, this summer. And also, I'm not sure, one of the other buildings this summer, which really need it.
And two of the smaller high school roofs.
And the high school roofs that are completely shot. So the fact that we're doing this now in January, yeah, we would love to time these all and do them on the public elections. But this will allow us to actually get the work done next summer, we hope, if everything goes well. So I appreciate that we have a shot at that and that we're going to start making a difference on the buildings and actually have, have good stewardship going forward. So I want to, I just want to express that gratitude. Brian, did you have something to say? You're on mute.
Sure, I just wanted to add that I strongly support the recommendation of Dr. Kelly and Matt to move forward with the referendum. You know, this is critical to the health and safety of our students to having teaching spaces that are tight and dry. Our teachers have been more than patient in some schools and waiting for this to happen. And from a financial perspective, I would make two notes. One is if we delay, there will be continued repairs for which we will receive no reimbursement from the state. And if we move forward with the thoughtful schedule that has been presented and we're only doing, I think, the two, two full roofs and part of the high school roof this summer. We have ample time to plan this very well. I would also note that the debt markets are still very favorable. And that if we go out to bond in January, while there are no certainties, it is probable that the markets will remain favorable for issuing debt. And if we wait a year, that's a big uncertainty. So I think for a lot of reasons, I support this. It's why the Operations Committee has advanced this every step of the way. I do appreciate Dan's concerns, but I I intend to support this and and grateful for the work done by the team.
And I do believe we should mention the thirty five cents on the dollar that we get back from the state by doing the work this way, rather than doing it through the capital budget. So anyone else have any comment? Sorry.
Thirty four.
Thirty four cents, thirty four cents. If there's no further comment, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Beth Barrett?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
No.
Dan Dart?
No.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz? Peter, are you there?
Peter?
I think he unmuted himself.
Peter Katz?
I think he's buffering.
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that motion passed. Do you want it because it's an important one? What was the the final on that, Matt? We have to restate that for the record.
Eight, four, and two again.
So eight to two, okay, thank you. I just want to be clear. That brings us then to the closing comments. Daphna?
Did you want to go first?
No, you can go ahead.
I I just wanted to take, you know, I meant to do this earlier in closed session, but I didn't have a chance. I just wanted to wish Beth a happy birthday. She definitely took the short straw, having a board meeting on her birthday. But we appreciate it. Happy birthday, Beth.
Oh, thank you.
It's nine, it's nine o'clock and that's our gift to you.
But don't forget, we're going in closed session after this.
We are doing a closed session, though, actually. We are doing a closed session on personnel matters. So maybe I will, we can move on to that. Could I have a motion? We would like to go into closed session to discuss some personnel matters. Jean, Brian? I think we have to read what we want to say before we vote on it. Matt, do you want to read that for us, please?
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly, I set up a
We're trying to make sure we are doing the appropriate resolutions to go into closed. Be a little more formal.
Okay, well, I just sent an invitation and then I have the closed session language. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Whereas NJ S A ten four twelve allows for a public body to go into closed, closed session during a public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education of the Prince Public Schools has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJ S A ten four twelve no longer applies. And whereas the regular meeting of this Board of Education will re, will close with no action taken out of closed session. Now therefore be resolved that the Board, Board, Board of Education of the Prince Public Schools will go into closed session. For the following uh, for the reason discussed, an emergent personnel issue. As uh, outlined at a, as allowed in NJ SA ten four twelve.
Thank you. And let's be, so can I have a motion for that specific resolution? Uh, Daphna, second. Jean, um, any discussion? Not going to have a vote on that, whether to go into closed session?
Is it a hand code?
Show of hands. I think that's appropriate. I see.
Unanimous?
Unanimous? Okay, we're going to go into closed session then. Thank you to the public for coming and and being with us this evening. We appreciate your, your attendance. Have a good week.
Night.
And we thank our administrators.
Good night. Thank you.
And now our board is going to go off into a different Zoom, right?
Happy birthday, Beth.
I just sent out the invitation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Carol. Okay, so everyone goes to the separate Zoom now.
Yes.